Counselor, one minute away. Could you get those lights green, please?
Big picture, yeah. Absolute blessing. Clock is struck thirty. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to take this opportunity to welcome everyone to the council agenda of Monday, December fifteenth. And with that, I'd like to please turn over to Clerk Tomasic for roll call.
Schumate?
Here.
Bosmer?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
Dill?
Here.
LaPointe?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Mulner?
Here.
We have no absent members to excuse, so that will bring us to our approval of the agenda. Members of public and to my peers here in chambers, looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Support.
Second by Bosmer. Any discussion on this matter? All right, well, I want to take this opportunity to remind you that we made some updates to our parliamentary procedure. And with that being said, we'll use a voice vote versus a roll call vote, and I will distinguish each. In this case, it will be a voice vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. And with that, we will turn over to public comments. Members of public, for our meeting, we have our public comment on the opening, and we'd love to hear from you. We also have a comment period before we adjourn, so anybody that wishes to address counsel, please state that podium. Make sure that light is green and state your name and address. Not seeing any members of public at this point. Keep in mind, you'll have another opportunity to do so before we adjourn, which will bring us to our presentations. As publicly noticed, we have two exciting items to cover. I want to lead with the first one, which is our Wayne County Commissioner Garza, who has done great work, and I know it took an army behind you, but I'd like to please welcome you to the podium.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel, Clerk, Treasurer. Alex Garza, Wayne County Commissioner for the Fourteenth District, Wayne County, which includes Taylor, actually, Taylor, Brownstown Township, Woodhaven, Gibraltar and Rockwood. I like to go right down north to south. But I wanted to just, this is a really important presentation. I think this has been a long time in the works. As we all know, I've worked with Counselor McNabb, the mayor, quite a few different folks on this for some time now. But I'll kind of give a brief backstory to this, just to kind of line this up to where we're at today. So about a year and a half ago, I got appointed to the county commission and went to start meeting with the mayors of the district and meeting with Mayor Schumate, Counsel McNabb, some others of your administration. We were talking about what the county can do for our communities. And one of the things that I left with was Mayor Schumate saying, look, we don't ask for much from the county. And that's something that's very unique for some of the smaller communities. A lot of times they get left out in the shuffle because they are smaller communities. So we were talking about this aquatic weed harvester, and I didn't know anything about it. I'm like, what is that? You know, so we were talking about that, started talking to Counsel McNabb a little bit about it and how important it is Gibraltar. So fast forward a year and a half later, a lot of back and forth, a lot of canceling this, putting it back on the agenda, canceling, put it back on the agenda. We're here today to present the city of Gibraltar with $161,777 towards the purchase of a new aquatic weed harvester. So we're really happy to be here today. A lot of folks helped make this happen. A lot of folks here at the dais, a lot of folks back at the county in Detroit. So we're really happy to be here today, to be able to do this and to be able to finally deliver on something that we've worked hard on for the last year and a half and even before that. So I just want to thank Counsel McNabb for all your help. His expertise on this piece of equipment has been invaluable, so we appreciate your help on that. And of course, Mayor, for all of your guidance on this as well. So I just want to thank you all. We're really excited for this. And we're really happy to be able to do this, so.
Can we give a round for Commissioner Garza and his team, please? I would like all of my peers to join me up front, so we can take a photo with Commissioner Garza and his team and the beautiful check that he's presented to this community. Just a couple of things before we do that. One, you are first to thank all of those that were part of the pathway, but you were a champion for the pathway, and without you, we wouldn't be sitting here with this check today. So just profusely, thank you for what you've done to make this possible. Two, I agree, Counsel McNabb has been an expert on the Waterways Commission and broad expertise to this matter. And I also want to give a shout out to Mr. Overwater and our Waterways Commission.
Yes.
They've been instrumental parties in assessing the technical needs, in addition to the operational needs, to make this possible as well. And then three, to the council peers, I think it's time we get up there, take a photo and celebrate with Commissioner Garza. So let's do that.
Thank you.
Well, what a great segue. In addition to taking care of our waterways and those weeds that can be a challenge for us, especially in certain seasons of the year, we also want to make sure we have a beautiful community that everybody gets to enjoy. And that beautiful community would not be possible without Dorothy Wood and the Beautification Commission, in addition to all the other parties that collaborate with them. So I'd like to invite Dorothy up to the podium, please, because we have a nice, exciting night to award members of the community that exemplify that beautification.
Okay. I just want to say just a couple of things. I'm Dorothy Wood for the Gibraltar Beautification Commission, as I am not officially on it, but I still like to help. So tonight, we will be presenting our annual beautification awards. We have been doing this since 2005, and Charlotte Dalca was the first to receive that. And you know, I can't go without saying something historical, so anyway. The awards are for residents to take care of their yards, not commercially, but they actually do the work themselves. And this is what helps keep Gibraltar beautiful, and that's what we're about. So tonight, we have two awards, and the first one is going to go to Ruth Porbath. So if she wants to come on up.
Can we give a round for Ruth, please? Thank you so much.
Okay, wait, I want to get.
We'd like to get a photo, if you don't mind being in the middle of the photo here.
I don't need to be in the photo.
Yeah, Dorothy, get in there. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's not just me. It's been the teamwork, so a lot of people have helped me. It's nice to be included into the restoration of other people's communities. A lot of beautiful yards in Gibraltar, so thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much. Another round, please.
And the second one is going to Ron and Denise Byrd.
Please join us up here. And thank you so much.
Thank you.
Love you. In the center here for a photo, if you're willing. Face Dennis over here. Thank you. Just want to thank you so much for everything you've done to earn that award. Appreciate it.
I appreciate the recognition.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so that concludes our awards, and we appreciate everything that everybody does around the city. I mean, this is not commercially done. This is everybody working and actually keeping our city beautiful. So we appreciate all that. Thank you so much.
Can we give a round to our winner, to Dorothy, please? Counsel, any comments you'd like to add before we close presentations?
If I may, I just want to say that I think it's real important that we honor people to do that, keep the yards present and beautiful and in great condition. I think that's the first line of defense in public safety, is having a community that looks lived in and cared for. People are looking out for each other. They come here to do some harm or damage. They're like, wait, these guys are looking out for each other. The yards are nice. We got lights up. Beautification takes care of that, and the flowers on the bridges and all that. To me, it's super important, so just want to mention that.
Well said. Thank you so much. Any other comments before we close presentations? Okay, with presentations concluded, we will move on to our consent agenda. Counsel and members of public, we have items A through H. Item A, Bill's Reference Number Twelve. Item B, Payroll Nine-Nine-One. Item C, City Council Minutes at Twelve-Eight-Twenty-Five. Item D, City Council Study Session Minutes of Twelve-Eight-Twenty-Five. Item E, Police Department Report for Twelve-Fifteen-Twenty-Five. Item F, Fire Department Report for Twelve-Fifteen-Twenty-Five. Item G, Receive and File Communication from Resident. And item H, Adoption of Wayne County Right-of-Way Permit Resolution. Counsel, this is something that requires a roll call vote, FYI, but is there a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Bosmer.
Second.
Second by Dill. Counsel, any discussion on consent agenda? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. With that, we will go to unfinished business, for which there is none this evening. And that will take us to new business, since we're all acumen to our parliamentary procedural shifts. I will call out for each of these items, whether it's a roll or a voice vote. Counsel, for the first item, I printed you out a copy that was sent via email, just so you had a visual reference. I would say segueing from our department head and administrative appointments that were made by you all. We took a critical look, as discussed, with respect to all the other liaison positions or other appointments related to organizations that counsel or members of the administration sit on. Just a couple of comments. One, this is not exclusive, meaning that while we've designated a liaison for these organizations or a member that serves as a primary for the organizations that require it, obviously, anybody in this room is able to attend and engage on those platforms and obviously share and communicate with the council members that are involved. So I just want to make that clear. But this helps kind of establish point responsibility where applicable, in some cases where the organizations require. The second thing is, these are my recommendations for appointment, and I base that off of discussions with each of you on your interests, as well as the expertise and experience. I think we need to be successful in each of these positions. As you know, some of them came with replacements, meaning we had an outgoing council member that was sitting there, so they need to be replaced. And others, you'll see our recommendations based on evolution of our administration. Each of an appointment requires a roll, or sorry, a roll call vote for this matter. So what I'd like to do is just have you reference the visual in front of you, and we can go bullet by bullet. The first is, I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Councilman Bosmer to the Thirty-Third District Court Liaison. Do we have that motion?
I'll make a motion to support the mayoral appointment of Councilman Bosmer to be our liaison for the Thirty-Third District Court, replacing Councilman Valentine.
We have a motion by LaPointe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dill. Counsel, any discussion on this matter?
My only discussion pertains to all of these appointments in general, and that is, you'd mentioned that some of these requirements for an appointment are required by contract or by agreement with them. Do we have any type of delineation as to which one of these are created by ordinance or created by resolution or are created by an agreement? What is the structural component thereof?
That's a really good question. I don't have the answer line by line. I'm glad to follow up with that. I know, like, just since we're on the first one in discussion, Thirty-Third District Court, this was requirement for a city of Gibraltar to sit on that and be, I would say, pulling through on the court voting or recommendations, budget, everything that we've approved or reviewed in the past. So that, to me, is more of a requirement. SEMCOG, similarly, like a primary requirement. DCC, primary or alternate. So some of them are more liaisons, like Beautification Commission or others. I don't want to misspeak. I don't have the ordinance language handy to tell you.
And I guess why I'm bringing it up is I just, I don't want to go back into the way of doing business where it's just, it's because that's the way we've always done it.
Yeah.
You know, if there's not something that's dictating that this is a requirement for us, then we have the option to make that establishment if we so choose. Just wanted to avoid us having positions that were not created.
I think it's a really important point. I think, I see, as I put the list in front of you this evening, I see all of them as valuable in context of the role or the central point of contact for counsel's updates. But to your point, I'm glad to look at this more closely. Any feedback we have as we go through each one?
Yeah, I think, I agree, all these, our community will benefit from having representation of. Just want to make sure procedurally that we're not making things up as we go.
Yeah, well said. Any further discussion on the Thirty-Third District Court appointment? All right, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Do I vote on my own appointment?
Yes, you can.
Okay, yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for serving as the Thirty-Third District Court Liaison. And I know previous members serving that capacity could bring you up to speed, and we'll make sure you have all the contacts you need to be successful.
All right, thank you.
Next on the list is liaison for the Beautification Commission. Nobody can replace Councilwoman Wood and all the work she's done in that capacity, but I do want to recommend appointment of Councilman Bosmer to serve as the liaison for Beautification Commission. I'd be looking for a motion accordingly.
Make a motion to support the mayor's appointment of Councilman Bosmer to the Beautification Commission.
We have a motion. I heard a second by McNabb. Any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations on your Beautification Commission liaison appointment. That will bring us to a similar line of thinking with Councilman Wood's departure. We will be recommending an appointment of Councilwoman LaPointe to serve as the liaison for the Historical Museum.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Motion by Bosmer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Dill. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? All right, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Hold on one second, please. McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you and congratulations, Councilwoman LaPointe, on that. Next up is liaison for Parks and Recreation. This is previously Councilwoman Walden. Recommend appointing Councilman Bosmer for this position. Do we have a motion for appointing Councilman Bosmer?
I move to support the mayor's appointment or recommendation to have Councilman Bosmer as our Parks and Recreation Liaison.
I'll second the motion.
Second by McNabb. Just for discussion purposes, I'll add, thank you. I know the three seats there are filling up in context of your duties pending a vote here, but we discussed, made feedback with Parks and Recreation Director Reynolds and the commission members. Also want to make sure we have collaboration and connection with the beautification and everything that those two departments can do together, so there's a nice little parallel there pending vote. So I just want everybody to have that context, and obviously, you also served on the commission, obviously, prior to taking your formal seat here on council. Any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Bosmer.
Thank you.
Next up, we have appointments related to SEMCOG. Recommending that Councilwoman LaPointe is our representative at SEMCOG. Do we have a motion for Councilwoman LaPointe?
Make the motion to appoint, for your recommendation of appointing Councilwoman LaPointe to SEMCOG.
We have a second. Second by Dill. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Motion carried. Councilwoman LaPointe, thank you for integrating with SEMCOG. DCC DMA will retain myself as a primary representative for that forum, but I'd like to recommend appointing City Administrator Witherspoon as her alternate. This ensures that if I'm not able to attend, that she can attend on my behalf in the seat for voting capacity at that forum.
Make that motion.
Motion by Cox to appoint City Administrator Witherspoon as alternate. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by LaPointe. Any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for your services alternate in that capacity. Next up, we have Alliance of Downriver Watersheds. I want to thank Councilwoman McNabb, who has served in this capacity. And to update our appointed individual serving in that capacity, I'd like to recommend the appointment of Councilman Bosmer. Looking for a motion from counsel accordingly.
Make a motion to replace Councilman Bosmer or appoint him to the Downriver Watershed, replacing Councilman McNabb, who resigned.
Motion by LaPointe. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for carrying your fourth role in context. With that, I'll just highlight my continued appreciation for Councilman McNabb and his Waterways Commission service. Thank you. So no action required there. Michigan Municipal League, City Administrator Witherspoon had brought this to the attention as we considered the appointments, as we think about MML and our partnership with them and the translation of resources and information from them. I'm recommending, since you are sitting in that central seat and conduit between us, I recommend the appointment of City Administrator Witherspoon to be our lead when it comes to MML interactions.
I make that motion.
We have a motion by McNabb. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Bosmer. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Sorry, hold on one second. Okay, so it's McNabb, and I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Bosmer.
Thank you. Okay. LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, City Administrator Witherspoon. Next up is SHUVA, incredibly important role. I want to just thank Councilman Cox, who's done a great job in integrating with SHUVA and the board as our primary representative. Right now, we have Bill Kane as our alternate. I'm proposing that counsel updates that appointment to be our alternate as DPW Director Saunt. I think it's important to have him in that position, and obviously, his attendance would be required if Councilman Cox cannot be present.
Make the motion.
Motion to appoint DPW Director Saunt as alternate for SHUVA. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb. Counsel, any discussion, and I know, Katie, we have you moving that hand fast, so apologies. Any discussion on this matter?
I would just ask that the motion states that Councilman Cox is staying as the primary?
Yeah, that, can we make sure that motion reflects it and that those that motion and supported support that? Okay, you good?
Yep.
Any other discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Cox and DPW Director Saunt. Thank you for stepping in as alternate. Zoning Ordinance Committee, this is exciting because this has been the pull-through of the grant dollars we received. Update our zoning ordinance language. Councilman Mulner and I sit on that committee amongst members of the public or broader commissions. I'm going to be looking for an update from our city planner and team on one that's going to be coming back to planning and DDA, and then ultimately, back to council, because I know we're should be very close to that path. But in that context, I just recommend maintaining Councilman Mulner and myself. Councilwoman Cosmore previously was appointed in her council seat. Obviously, she stepped away from council, so that turned into a resident representation. I would love to consider, if the council feels appropriate, a motion to add Councilman Cox to the committee. My why is, especially as we're at the tail end of this exercise as a committee, it'd be great to have his eyes on this as it prepares to go to planning and DDA, given his commission representation. I see it as a pretty light lift, perhaps a meeting if that, but that was my thought process I wanted you to have behind it. So I'd be looking for a motion to appoint Councilman Cox as a representative on our zoning ordinance committee.
Make that motion.
Motion by Bosmer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by LaPointe. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Cox, for leaning on that. We'll get you integrated with the updated information, just so you get your eyes on it.
Appreciate that.
Dispatch Board of Representatives. Councilman Mulner serves us in that capacity. Just for everybody's context, we had absorbed our neighbor's Rockwood Dispatch, obviously, now operate that centrally out of Gibraltar. And when we were discussing that with their leadership, we had established a board of representatives. Rob, can you speak to kind of the specifics, at least like at a high level? I think it's hiring and purchasing and other.
Yeah, so we meet quarterly, and there's five of us. There's two from Rockwood, three from Gibraltar. And the purpose is any expenditures that would be covered by both cities, over $5,000 would be considered by us. And then there's other ancillary responsibilities of just being engaged with the hiring process of the dispatchers themselves.
Nice. I think Councilman Mulner should stay in that capacity, so I'm just recommending we keep business as usual, as that's been going incredibly well, from what I can tell.
I'll make that motion.
Great. A motion for Councilman Mulner to maintain his position on the Board of Representatives for Dispatch.
Exactly.
Ladies first, maybe? Any discussion on that matter? All right, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
And then lastly, we have our Infrastructure Advisory Committee. Recommending appointing Councilman Dill to our Infrastructure Advisory Committee. For those that don't have a lot of experience or familiarity, we can obviously share more information on that, but at a high level, they meet regularly. It is publicly noticed. They have an agenda and minutes accordingly. And the vision from the beginning was that it was there to interpret and drive recommendations based on the experts that are sitting in that and council representatives to help inform our infrastructure pathway. So I think it's something we can take a critical look at as we look at January and our strategic priority discussions and our broader operations, but I'm recommending appointing Councilman Dill as in addition to that Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
Make a motion that we appoint Councilman Dill to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
We have a motion by LaPointe. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Bosmer. Counsel, any discussion? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Dill, for joining that effort. And that will close out our appointments for council positions, item A. And I will turn it over to City Administrator Witherspoon.
Thank you. So the first item is for the timeline of the fiscal year 2026-27 budget calendar. I know it seems really soon to be talking about budget, but internally, we're always talking about it. So we want to set up the calendar of when we will publicly discuss it and have our deliverables to you. And I'll let Amy speak to it, because she did all the heavy lifting on this one.
It's kind of pretty much the same as similar to last year, where we have a study session set up the week before to go over the budget. Except for I did put that I would distribute it to council, the meeting before that, so that we could receive and place it on file, so that you guys would all have it in your hands quite a bit before our actual study session.
Yeah, so we meet quarterly, and there's five of us. There's two from Rockwood, three from Gibraltar, and the purpose is any expenditures that would be covered by both cities, over $5,000 would be considered by us. And then there's other ancillary responsibilities of just being engaged with the hiring process of the dispatchers themselves.
Nice. I think Councilman Mulnar should stay in that capacity, so I'm just recommending we keep business as usual, as that's been going incredibly well, from what I can tell.
I'll make that motion.
Great. A motion for Councilman Mulnar to maintain his position on the Board of Representatives for Dispatch. Ladies first, maybe? Any discussion on that matter? All right. Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Cox, for leaning on that. We'll get you integrated with the updated information, just so you can get your eyes on it.
Appreciate that.
Dispatch Board of Representatives. Councilman Mulnar serves us in that capacity. Just for everybody's context, we had absorbed our neighbors Rockwood Dispatch. Obviously, now operate that centrally out of Gibraltar. And when we were discussing that with their leadership, we had established a board of representatives. Rob, can you speak to kind of the specifics, at least like at a high level? I think it's hiring and purchasing and other.
Yeah, so we meet quarterly, and there's five of us. There's two from Rockwood, three from Gibraltar, and the purpose is any expenditures that would be covered by both cities, over $5,000 would be considered by us. And then there's other ancillary responsibilities of just being engaged with the hiring process of the dispatchers themselves.
Nice. I think Councilman Mulnar should stay in that capacity, so I'm just recommending we keep business as usual, as that's been going incredibly well, from what I can tell.
I'll make that motion.
Great. A motion for Councilman Mulnar to maintain his position on the Board of Representatives for Dispatch. Ladies first, maybe? Any discussion on that matter? All right. Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Cox, for leaning on that. We'll get you integrated with the updated information, just so you can get your eyes on it.
Dispatch Board of Representatives. Counsel, any discussion on this matter?
I make a motion that we appoint Councilman Dill to the Infrastructure Advisory Committee.
We have a motion by LaPointe. Do we have a second?
Support.
Support by Bosmer. Counsel, any discussion? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you, Councilman Dill, for joining that effort. And that will close out our appointments for council positions, item A, and I will turn it over to City Administrator Weatherspoon.
Thank you. So the first item is for the timeline of the fiscal year 2026-27 budget calendar. I know it seems really soon to be talking about budget, but internally, we're always talking about it. So we want to set up the calendar of when we will publicly discuss it and have our deliverables to you, and I'll let Amy speak to it, because she did all the heavy lifting on this one.
It's kind of pretty much the same as similar to last year, where we have a study session set up the week before to go over the budget, except for I did put that I would distribute it to council, the meeting before that, so that we could receive and place it on file, so that you guys would all have it in your hands quite a bit before our actual study session to go over and come up with any questions, comments, thoughts that you might have that you might want us to adjust on the budget. Yeah, this is just something that we've been trying to do moving forward, to make sure that everybody's involved and to make sure that we're having a discussion regarding all of the budget items.
Council will be looking for a motion to adopt the 26-27 budget timeline.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Dill. For discussion, I just want to commend Finance Director McEwen and all those that made this possible. I know we've been educated and guided and the best process to make sure we have a robust timeline and plan for budget. That includes administrative input, department head input, finance director oversight and guidance, public voice and input, so just thank you. Any other discussion on this matter? All right. This one, we can do a voice vote. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Well, your timeline has been adopted, Amy.
Yay.
Any other comments or things you'd like to share?
No, but the next one is hard to.
Okay, great. Back to you.
So the next item, if you recall, a month and a half ago, maybe, we adopted a cash handling policy. And as part of that, we discussed better reporting mechanisms internally and as well as receipts. We spoke with BSNA, who does our cash receipting software, as well as our IT vendor, and they recommended this receipt printer to us, and I'll let Amy speak a bit more about that.
Okay, so originally, we, they recommended three different receipt printers, and I did find one on Amazon, but unfortunately, it was refurbished model, and the software didn't want to talk to the BSNA software. So I went through BSNA and asked them where to find these, because two out of the three are no longer made. So this is the only one that is still made, and unfortunately, it's got an over $1,000 price tag, which is why I wanted to present it to get a purchase approval on it, since it is our purchasing policy.
And just to clarify, if you look at the fiscal impact, this is the receipt printer we will use for all cash receiptings, so there's three different accounts it's coming out of. And I don't remember the account numbers offhand, so if you have that question, we can direct it to Amy.
We're looking for a motion to purchase the Epson Series receipt printer.
I'll make a motion to purchase an Epson Series TMH6000VI receipt printer in the amount of $1,099, if my math is right.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by McNabb. Any discussion on this matter?
Any indication how long this receipt printer will last based on technology? Since there's other receipt printers that are no longer in existence, I'm just curious of what our duration of time is that before we have to change it.
I think this one should last as long as it's compatible with BSNA, and that really depends on BSNA, if they switch over to a different system. There is talk of them forcing everyone to move to the cloud. However, I think it should still work if it moves over to the cloud. I'm not 100% certain, but.
It would still work if they moved over to the cloud, and they said that they're years out before making everybody move over to the cloud at my conference. So I think it would be safe to say at least, I would say, five years at a minimum.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other discussion on this matter?
The treasurer just brought to my attention that the invoice or the quote is less than what I just put in our bid.
I detected that verbally, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Yep, I think you're spot on. 1375 is what you're referring to.
Yeah, but that's not what I said.
No, I think you said 1,199.
No, I said 1,099.
Oh, okay, yeah, it should be 1,100.
1,375?
The one, the 275 is for a cash drawer, which we already were able to purchase that. The 275, sorry, was for the cash drawer, which we were able to purchase off Amazon.
Oh, so I'm a work.
Yep.
Okay.
You're just a dollar off.
I'm just a dollar off?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to revise my amendment to say $1,100.
Can we revise that, please? And then do we support that revision?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this matter?
If you don't mind, I had a question. If we move over to cloud, whenever they're ready to do that, are they going to keep a hard copy for our records locally still? Or is that going to be just, we merge to the cloud, and that's the way it's going to be after they do that? Do you know?
So that would be a discussion we have at that point. I know both Amy and myself are very against moving to the cloud anytime soon, essentially until they force us.
Yeah.
Because it would be very expensive for us, and every municipality I know that has moved to the cloud is not happy.
Right.
So, yeah, we're, a lot of municipalities and us, treasurers and managers, we're in lockstep, no cloud, so we're working on it. But that's a decision we'd make at that time.
Okay, thank you.
And we would probably, if that was so, we'd probably bring IT in as well to discuss everything.
Yep.
Any further discussion on this matter? All right, this will be a voice vote, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Any other comments on this matter for Rachel or Amy?
And I was just going to say, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season.
Yes, well said, and thank you. Next up, we have item D. I know, City Attorney, you had a comment there that you want to raise.
Yeah, just looking at the order for new business, procedurally, if council wants, I'd recommend we put D and G last, and we go into closed session to discuss both items, and then just finish the new business. That's not closed session. My recommendation, instead of.
It's a recommendation.
Going closed, coming back, and then going closed again. It just makes more sense to finish on a closed.
I agree with that logic. Is there any objections to that? And then procedurally, do we need to do anything? I know we've already approved the agenda as stated, but since we're already encompassing all items, is there any issue with?
No, we're not modifying. We're just modifying the order of the new business, so.
Is everybody okay with that?
Just want to make sure, one motion for both closed sessions, or?
So just to reorder.
Motion to go into closed session to discuss D and G of new business. They're two separate items. We'll make clear, it's clear by the agenda.
Okay.
But we'd go into closed session to discuss both.
Under one motion.
And then that would obviously be after we cover the other items. Any objections to that? Okay. Then keeping that thought process in mind, item E is strategy for the City of Gibraltar cell tower. I just want to thank Councilman Mulnar, who's been a part of a lot of the discussions that we've had historically on this matter. City Administrator Weatherspoon has been brought up to speed in this matter. Our city attorney's been brought up to speed. I know discussions have been had, information's being shared. No action required tonight. I wanted to make sure that I could get everybody up to speed, including our new administration on the matter at hand, and I expect that this will come back to you for action, targeted the second meeting of January. So just keep that in the back of your mind. Offline information will be shared with all applicable parties, and we'll merge towards an action potential the second meeting of January. Any questions, comments for me on that matter? Okay, I'll turn it over to Rachel for item F. Oh, sorry, please.
I don't know if it's appropriate, we don't have a motion on the table, but we have two cellphone towers in town. Is this correct?
Do you know the specifics, Rachel? I don't want to misspeak.
I believe we only have one.
City, there's one behind the high school.
Specific and get the information that we're looking for, if that makes sense.
So counsel, motion being your court to approve the request for proposal for engineer of record services.
Take that motion.
Motion by Bosmer, do we have a second?
Um, I'll second it.
Discussion.
The motion to include that the due date is now Friday, January 28th at 2:00 PM, the closing of the bids.
Do we have support on updating that motion to reflect that? So January 28th is what the motion will reflect at 2:00 PM. Discussion, counsel.
I had on your, on the compensation, 6.1 on there. The items, there's four items that show a percentage of project cost. And that's been a concern in the past with some of our projects that went out on bond, specifically when the Middle Gibraltar Road went out for the water main. There was, it was a $2.5 million contract that ended up coming in at 1.6 million. Yet we paid percentages upwards of 9% on the original 2.5 million. And it, and it turned out to be a pretty egregious fee we paid to the engineering firm that was not earned.
So they had you pay for the initial project cost, not the actual project cost?
Right, and that was in their contract too.
Oh.
And so what the, the percentage of con- construction cost for design, layout, testing, inspection, I think is maybe customary to municipal in some degree, but certainly is not on a private side. I've never, I've never seen a proposal from an engineering firm that had a percentage of contract to cover these items. We would, now granted, those are project by project bid and not engineer of record. But this is where the, I guess the, this is where it's going to be very difficult for us to compare bids apples to apples on these folks because we don't know what are, what types of projects that we're going to be having and how that's going to flow through to the percentages versus hourly's or versus other deliverable measurables. So the, the percentage of contract cost is just something that I've thought we should steer away from as possible.
Okay, um, I'm sorry, I'm a little flabbergasted, to be honest, that they had you pay a percentage of the original estimate, not the actual cost. I've never seen that before.
Yeah.
So that's something that in any contract I'd be looking to make sure that doesn't happen.
It was, I believe it was actually they paid the percentages off the awarded contract, not as-built, right? So that's the reference point. So awarded dollar amount is what they paid the percentages to the engineering firm. But the as-built contract was 25% less than that amount.
So they-
For an example.
So, so I think it's a really important insight. Now, the question becomes how do you operationalize that from not happening again? Do you feel like you can tailor the agreement to address Rob and Rick's point? I mean, what do we need action? Rob, any suggestions there on how we, like what, what we do to tailor that specific?
So again, from my perspective, I've, I've engaged in times where it's been one project at a time and not engineer of record. So may, maybe there's a threshold line item saying that the percentage of cost is okay up until the anticipated cost of the contract is 500,000 or more, in which time then we, we get estimates, estimated values from them. I mean, I, just a suggestion.
I think that's a fair way to go. I think we should use this template as is. This will present us hopefully apples to apples based on the requirements of what we have listed. But that doesn't mean we're-
That's not the price, yeah.
It doesn't, you know, we're not contractually obligated to follow those percentages on future awarded projects. Those could be requested as, you know, a cost estimate based on what the project value might be, not necessarily percentages. But this should give us a value to, a way to evaluate the engineering firms based on trying to get the apples to apples, if you will.
So then maybe, maybe what you're suggesting, Councilman Cox, is that between Ms. Witherspoon and, and our attorney, they could generate a contract between the two that would address this?
That's correct.
Yes.
I get it.
Reasonable.
Great insight. Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'm assuming this is a voice vote? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, please state aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried, and we are excited to get this out. It's extended deadline as motioned.
Thank you all.
Anything else that you'd like to share, Rachel?
Um, no, this time.
Okay, great. Then going back to our previous discussion as guided by our attorney, counsel, we have two remaining items, both of which are proposing a closed session. I would be liking a motion to encompass both. I know you mentioned D and G, but for the sake of record, perhaps whoever is going to make that motion states specifically the two items that would be motion to go into closed session.
I think a motion goes in closed session, request to enter a closed session per MCL 15.268E to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy. Reason, Tang Way vs. City of Gibraltar. And the other item was, letter again, please?
G.
G was, thank you. As a clarification, request to enter closed session to discuss written legal opinion.
Anthony, does that procedurally take care of both requests?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Bosmer, according to the motion stated, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb. In this case, we will do all in favor, please state aye.
No, I'm sorry. We'll call vote for-
Oh, roll call, sorry about that. Clerk Tomasi, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Bosmer?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Dill?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Motion carried. Counsel, our, our approach has been that we go upstairs to our conference room, for which we have ample space. That allows our public to remain here without disruption, and then we come back here for the following agenda. Sound fair? You can turn your mics off, and then return.
That's so close.
Thank you for your patience. We're just waiting for your full counsel to return from a bio break on the way back.
Well, aren't you nice. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
All right, counsel, can we get those mics green? All right, first and foremost, we will be looking for a motion to return to our open council meeting.
So moved.
Support. Motion by LaPointe, support by Bosmer. Any discussion? Clerk Domasi, please call roll.
Mulner.
Yes.
Shumate.
Yes.
Bosmer.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Dill.
Yes.
LaPointe.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Great. That motion's been carried. We are now back into our open council meeting. Counsel, obviously, the motion was carried to enter closed session on two matters. Matters detailed in item D and G and reflected in the motion. Counsel, the motion would be in your court coming out of our closed session on the first matter if you so chose.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the attorney as it relates to the settlement, Tangway versus the City of Gibraltar.
Support.
Motion by LaPointe, support by Bosmer. Any discussion on this matter, counsel? Clerk Domasi, please call roll.
Shumate.
Yes.
Bosmer.
Yes.
Cox.
No.
Dill.
Yes.
LaPointe.
Yes.
McNabb.
No.
Mulner.
No.
Okay.
Motion carries four to three.
Motion carries four to three. Thank you. And then the other matter that was discussed as reflected on item G and within the carried motion, is there any action that counsel would like to motion for on that matter?
I'd like to make the motion. I'd like the clerk to read the motion, please, so I can read verbatim, give it out.
Clerk Domasi will have you reference the language.
It was to request special investigator Miller Johnson attorneys to come in to discuss an updated written legal opinion with city council in a closed session on January 12, 2026.
Thank you.
I'll second that. Do we have a second? I'm sorry.
We do not. Now we do. So you support that language as read.
Yes, as read.
Motion by Bosmer. We have a second by LaPointe. Clerk Domasi, I want to give you a minute to record said motion, and then we will open up for discussion. Any discussion on this matter? Once your motion is captured, we will have you call roll, please.
Asmer.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Dill.
Yes.
LaPointe.
Yes.
McNabb.
Yes.
Mulner.
Yes.
Shumate.
Yes. Motion carried. So that will address new business as we've returned from our open, or to our open meeting. And with that, the next item on the agenda is public comments. Members of public who wish to turn it over to you for any comment you may have. If you have any comment, please approach that podium. Make sure that light is green and state your name and address.
Richard Tangway, 5260 Barbara, Trenton, Michigan. Before I start, I'd like to know about, is it a three-minute time limit now? And I'm going to start my timer then, so I have it, okay?
Just so you know, I already started it, so I'm at 15 seconds.
I'd rather not. I had that question, but that's fine. I'll get it over in 15 seconds. Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to let you know that we've sat through multiple depositions, multiple hearings, multiple attorneys that have passed the bar have listened to this, and high-powered attorneys that passed the bar have recommended a settlement. The three people that voted no tonight are the reason you're here and the reason I'm going on vacation. So they are learning a very good lesson tonight. MML, check your MML fees and fines. Check how much you pay a Michigan Municipal League in the future, because your insurance is going to go up because of what they did. It's a shame that they think that they did something right. It's a shame that their wives are on social media posting all kinds of things. We were going to have an agreement where I didn't get to say anything. But one of the things happened. They said they can't control some councilman's wives. And I said then, I'm not signing that part of the agreement. I won't. If they can go on social media and say whatever they want, I will never sign an agreement that says I can't say it. I am going to produce a timeline that will lead the public to many, many documents. And these documents can be FOIA'd. I'm sorry, Katie, but I am going to post these documents, including text messages from these council members to each other. Dates and times, and it's all there. And there's, you know, a little thing about the depositions. Katie might have been able to tell somebody at the attorney's advice that we don't have them. You're all going to receive them in email, and they'll be public record. You'll have them. So I appreciate it. My minute, I got a minute and 21 left. I also think it's awfully ironic that you put a three-minute time limit in here. And I'm going to close with something. I appreciate Garrett voting yes, but I will say something, Garrett. The public needs to know what kind of person you really are. They need to hear what kind of person you really are. You stood here in meetings, supporting me, telling my family you love me and supporting me. And then when we got you under oath, you couldn't remember what you said. When we got you under oath and asked you to listen to a video of what you said, you couldn't remember what you said, and your attorney dragged you out in the hallway. Your great-grandfather and your grandfather were men of their word. They lived by their word, and their word mattered. And you decided to be a coward. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Are there any additional members of public that wish to address counsel?
Tracy Garant, 30624 Bayview Drive. Just wondering why we were, why... Just wondering why we were, why Mr. Dill was able to have any type of vote in this. He had a very personal relationship, which he informed us of many times, unless you're going to backpedal on that, too. Multiple lunches, him and, you know, Scott Dennison were aware of the lawsuit before it was even happening, would drop hints continuously on Facebook. But I would think it would be a huge conflict for him to have any type of a vote.
Thank you. Any additional members of public that wish to address counsel?
Wayne Brennan, 30490 South Gibraltar Road. I just hope everybody has a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Appreciate that. Any additional members of public that wish to address counsel this evening? All right, that will close our public comments, and we'll turn it over. Clerk, report anything you'd like to add this evening?
No, no report. Thank you.
Treasurer, anything you'd like to add this evening?
No report. Just happy Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everybody.
I have a question.
Yeah, please.
Have you posted a bond yet? The treasurer's bond that was required by the previous treasurer? Are we, okay, that's all taken care of? Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the first day I was in.
Awesome. Any further questions for Treasurer? All right, Counsel report. Any members of counsel that wish to have any updates this evening?
Oh, we got a blood drive coming up, January 30th. It's a Friday. It's at the Gil Talbert Community Center. And I'd really like to people to consider, if you're healthy enough and available and you have that time in your hands to give, please come out, make an appointment. If you need help, I can always help you do that. I'd like to show a strong presence from our community to help our fellow mankind and do the right thing on that level. And just add Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, whatever celebration you celebrate. Wish you a very peaceful New Year. Thank you.
Hey, just one.
Yeah, please.
Just update to residents and folks at home. I will be having office hours this Wednesday from 4:00 to 5:30 p.m. here in the conference room in City Hall. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Any further updates from counsel? All right, let's turn it over to our administrator for anything you may have to share.
Thank you. I don't have any updates on anything today, but I would like to, I love Christmas because for me, it's a season of gratitude. And I just want to share how grateful I am for each and every one of you up here. You all share your knowledge and your wisdom with me, and I appreciate that so much more than you could know. So I want to thank you all, along with all of our incredible staff. And with that, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year.
Amazing. Any questions for our administrator? Well, it'll be my report. I won't be redundant other than to reinforce gratitude for all that make it possible and wish everybody and theirs a very happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. And with that, if there's no questions or comments, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Bosmer, do we have a second? Second by LaPointe. Clerk, voice vote on this one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Have a wonderful evening, everybody. Thank you so much.
I wasn't here last meeting, but I did take care of that thing with the bank actually.
Oh, good. Okay.
So, yeah. So I called the, found out that the rules changed, so that's why you guys had to vote on it again.
Okay.
So, I did ask if you followed through on what you asked.
I'm going to go start planning your anniversary party. I'll see you.
Katie, do you want to get my picture?
Merry Christmas if I don't see you. It would be nice if we did get together.
No, you don't.
Never should be. I don't like that.
We can. It's just a matter of finding that date and trying to get.